Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for June 14, 2021. The time is now 6:30. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please stay standing for one second, let me do a couple moments of silences. Diane Keith. Diane Keith passed away on June 1st. A longtime resident of Abington, Diane retired from the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department Bureau of Criminal Investigation where she was the executive assistant to the director. Prior to that, Diane was executive secretary to the Board of Selectmen from 1976 through 1989. After retirement, Diane volunteered at the Abington Senior Center, which she loved. She served as president of the Abington Senior Association and served on the Friends of Abington Seniors for many years in various capacities. She worked on many political campaigns. Diane loved cooking, music, dancing, bowling, reading, and family gatherings. Diane will be missed by her loving family and many friends. And Nancy Kavanaugh. Nancy Kavanaugh passed away on May 21st. A former resident of Abington, she served on the Planning Board, the Council on Aging, and led the South Shore Senior Chorus. Nancy had many interests, but her passion was music, and she graduated with a major in music from Wheaton College and was administrator of the music section within the Department of Humanities at MIT. She leaves behind a wonderful family and many friends and will be greatly missed. All public announcements. Alex Sagerty, do you have any?
Yes, I have two public announcements, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate the graduates of Abington High School, Class of 2021, for their hard work, determination, and impressive achievements. The Class of 2021 has proven to the Abington community that their leadership, kindness to help others, talent, and greatness will prosper for years to come. The Class of 2021 faced numerous obstacles that no other Abington graduating class has ever encountered in their junior and senior years before. However, despite the COVID-19 pandemic, the Class of 2021 rose above every challenge with their spirits held high and achieved success. The graduates found new and creative ways to make their senior year incredibly special. As a leader for the town of Abington, I am immensely proud of the Class of 2021, and I want to follow their example. May their journeys lead to tremendous prosperity. Congratulations to the Abington Class of 2021. And my last announcement for today's meeting is this one. Abington, we are in the month of June, and as the town of Abington's first openly gay selectman, it is with sincerest pride that I colorfully acknowledge the celebration of Pride Month. Pride Month was founded to honor the June 28, 1969 Stonewall uprising, also known as the Stonewall Riots, that ignited the gay rights movement. We celebrate Pride Month as society's reminder that every life is treasured and that love and acceptance are the values we hold dear. Our LGBTQ people matter. Our uniquenesses brightens our world like a rainbow. History has fluctuated with society's acceptance of gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender people. Even as we sit here today, 69 countries around the world criminalize homosexuality. No human should be harmed, jailed, or especially killed for being themselves. That is why it is vitally important to advocate for support, acceptance, and love for each other. For me, Pride Month isn't about fabulous outfits, extravagant parades, or corporation advertisements. It's about equality. Of course, there is much more work still to do, but thanks to the generations of patriots, equality continues to grow. Our society is stronger when we are inclusive. My message to those who are struggling with their identity and want to shine, let your colors shine out proud. Never let your fear stop your happiness. People accept, support, and love you. It's human nature. This Pride Month, remember to love one another, accept one another, and be proud to be you. Thank you, Abington. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can you top that?
No.
Does you have one?
The Friends of the Library will be holding a mini book sale on Wednesday, June 23rd, from 4:30 to 6:30. The Friends are inviting people to eat and read and shop book trucks under the library portico while they are here for the food truck event. They'll also be promoting summer reading and registering Abington residents for library cards under the portico at the same time. Any information can be found at abingtonpl.org.
And I just have one. The HUG Foundation's annual celebrity softball tournament will be held on June 26th behind Beaver Brook Elementary School. We weren't able to do it last year because of COVID, so if you've been there before, you know it's free to anyone to come and watch the games. There will be some celebrities there that will sign autographs and take pictures, and it's free for all spectators, and there will be an after-party cookout at the Knights of Columbus afterwards, so you're also invited
I have one message from Adam Gunn. Adam is a Director of Veteran Services for the Town of Abington. He wanted us to share a message about Flag Day. Flag Day is today, and Americans should reflect on the foundations of our nation's freedom. The flag of the United States means different things to many different people. The flag of the United States represents freedom and has been an endurance symbol of the country's ideals since its early days. Americans should remember their loyalty to the nation, reaffirm their belief in liberty and justice, and observe the nation's unity. The American flag, also nicknamed as Old Glory or Star-Spangled Banner, has changed designs over the centuries. It consists of 13 horizontal stripes of red, top and bottom, alternating with white, with a blue rectangle and a canton bearing 50 small white five-pointed stars. Each of the 50 stars represents one of the 50 states in the United States and the 13 stripes represent the original 13 colonies that became the first states in the Union. Today, we should talk about our great flag with our friends, family, and kids. Discuss the significance of it flying high and what it means to you so we can honor it for many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I have none at this time. Next, just public comments. Does anyone have any public comments for anything on the agenda and the agenda items or old business? Come up now, state your name and your address.
Yeah, there's an agenda item. Sorry, wait until you talk then.
You can come up and speak now if you'd like. Just state your name and address, please.
My name is William Creighton, 53 Vineyard Road, and I want to talk about the agenda item of Helm Street. I don't know if you want to do it now or wait till that time on the agenda?
Is it under the old business section, is that what you're discussing?
Yes.
You can speak now.
Okay. There's one, and I did receive an email from the town manager, basically implying that you've already made a decision on my complaint.
Yeah, I actually did send him out a copy of our correspondence from KP Law. So it probably was a bit premature to send him the memo with it, but I did send him the correspondence, which we should discuss.
Okay. We're going to be discussing that tonight, but do you have anything to speak on that now, or?
I do. First, the attorney's letter. I don't know if you have a copy of it?
Yeah, we're going to discuss that, but is it, what exactly?
I want to talk about the attorney's letter.
Okay.
Do you want to do that now or under old business?
Well, I mean, at this time, this is a, an investigation was done, so we're going to be discussing that tonight, but I mean, there's avenues for you to take at this time, but.
Okay, I'm a little confused. I will address that letter right now or when you talk about under old business?
Yes, go ahead. You can address it, but again, we're gonna, there is some options for you, so please address it.
So the board has not made a decision on the complaint?
We're going to discuss that. This is public, time for public comment. Right now, we're going to discuss this letter, our investigation, what town council did for us.
I know.
But if you want to discuss, if you want to discuss your complaints or whatnot, you can voice them now in public comment, and then when discussion, we'll talk about it then.
So the attorney's letter did not address all the items in my complaint. Completely missed all the zoning issues that I have in the complaint letter. Like it says, the letter from Attorney Donald Nagel states without support that the property is located within a residential zone. This does not appear to be the case. Well, there's a house on the property. So a house, to me, is residential. There's a registered voter living in a house on the property. And I thought we couldn't have a house and commercial properties, businesses on the same property, like on Adams Street. But there's a residence with a registered voter on the property.
Okay.
So that leads me, believes, that residential area. If you also look at it, Lot Number 64 on the property. Let's look at the zoning map. The majority of that lot is in a residential zone. I don't know if the attorney looked at that zoning map. I got the zoning map from the old Colony Planning Council. The attorney says it's business development. Well, the business development requires a special permit for open lot storage of registered transport vehicles. Has the town issued that permit? I don't know, I'm asking. Has the town issued a permit for that?
Then we'll talk about it in the discussion.
Okay, well, all right. Also, the zoning laws require off-street parking areas to be paved. That is not paved. It also requires parking lots where large trucks are stored and invisible from the street shall be screened from street view, which is not the case. You can see everything from Route 18. So the attorney didn't discuss any of that. And then attorney's letter says, however in any event, on July 23rd, 2020, the zoning enforcement issued a zoning determination, basically declining enforcement stating that the property is grandfathered, nonconforming use. Grandfathered what? To be grandfathered, it has to be a business that was issued a permit. I have been to the town clerk's office. There are no permits on Helm Street. The properties on the right-hand side are addressed on Bedford Street, not Helm Street. The properties on the left-hand side, like the auto body shop and stuff like that, they are permitted on Bedford Street. So the town clerk told me there were no permits for any businesses on Helm Street.
Okay.
The lots are talking about. So how can there be grandfathering if there's no statement of what the business was that's being grandfathered?
Okay.
Also, the building inspector made his decision on that on a Google satellite photo dated 2002. Well, the current owner, who purchased Lots 64 and 65, he purchased them after 2002. So how could those two lots be grandfathered when they were purchased after the determination when the grandfathering was? They were three lots. It also says the zoning determination was never appealed. Correct, because we were trying to find out what the term grandfathering was.
Okay.
The building inspector kept refusing to tell us what that, what was grandfathered. We haven't asked him for the permit for the business there, and he didn't come up with anything. And really, there wasn't much communication. It was one-way communication with the building inspector. So how can there be any grandfathering when there's no business existed? There's no permits. There's no permits now. You just driven by. You see all sorts of boats, construction vehicles. There's no permits for any of that. And you can't tell me it's boat storage. This is boating season. This is prime boating season. All boats are in the water, except for maybe the boats are not storage. Maybe it's a different business. And then there's wetlands issues. The major property, there is no certificate of compliance from 2008. DEP gives a certificate of compliance, and they're refusing to give a certificate of compliance. And you talked to Mr. Greg Cezza from DEP, which I hope somebody here get a chance to talk to. You can ask him why the DEP won't on issue the certificate of compliance. And he's telling us that the owner is supposed to file with the Conservation Commission on the other property about the field that was brought in. There's no timeline to do this, but he is the chairman of that committee, so he knows the rules. And he's your representative. This board appointed him, so he is representing you in his actions with wetlands rules. That's about all I have right now.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Any other further public comments? Step right up. Just state your name and address.
Ronald Howell, 149 Walnut Street. I just have questions on the vote to approve auction of surplus land parcels. I wasn't sure, you know, if any might be excluded, you know, when the vote is taken, you know, such as, you know, Center North School.
That's not part of this? So there's only certain parcels, but the Center School, North School are not part of this current plan to auction. So that may happen in the future, but it is definitely, it's not part of this round.
Okay. Is there a list available of what the parcels are?
There'll be a list that will get posted.
Okay.
But yeah, those two we didn't include in it. So that's for future discussion.
Because there's also a couple of large parcels that I don't know if the Avenue Affordable Housing Committee might be interested in looking at for, working on their program.
Agreed.
Come right up. State your name and address.
Shell Kearney, 652 Adams Street. About 662 Adams Street. So I got Ms. Questle's report, or one of her reports, I should say, which is fine. I wish she was here, but that's unfortunate. But I'm still waiting for the report from last July in 2020, Marshals or something saying he didn't do one, or you can't prove it, or just something about that investigation.
Is that in my meeting summary? Do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, as far as that goes, there is, I mean, we have some letters from Marshall to the Mr. Sullivan, asking him or demanding that he ceases and desists and goes in front of the Planning Board for Site Plan Review. There's quite a few letters of correspondence. You're welcome to have copies of them. I think that would probably be everything that we do have.
But is that the investigation into the 175 complaint?
That will be the correspondence. You'll see him going back and forth. So yes, during that time, he is, he is going through and doing his investigation. So that's the correspondence we have. We'll get your copies tonight, though.
Okay. All right. It's unfortunate we didn't have the chance to appeal until back in July. Also, what about the 98 complaint? And are you guys, have you guys considered ordering corrections or?
They're going to have to discuss that tonight.
That's a discussion tonight. Just if you have anything with, new with this, we'll have a discussion, but this is public comment. So if you have anything you want to say.
I thought it was public comments about what's on the agenda.
It is, yes. We're going to have a discussion tonight about that, but we're not there yet. We're just in the public comment section.
Okay, I guess I'll wait. Thank you.
Any other further, yes?
652 Adams Street. I didn't really catch it. So are we going to be able to come back up and speak during the, during the discussion?
No, we're just, I have a discussion tonight.
We make the comments now and then you guys discuss later.
And again, if there's anything new, anything you have to say, go ahead. But we're going to have a discussion tonight, as Michelle already got the.
All right. So, so last time we appeared in front of you guys, I gave you a bunch of very detailed questions. Did you guys get a chance to read them? Because I don't have any answers.
Okay. And again, we, we going to, we're going to discuss that tonight with the investigation, what happened. But is there anything new that you want to talk about right now?
Just, yeah, so, so we got, we got the determination from town council on, on the grandfathered use, the nonconforming use, the conforming use. Obviously, it seems like zoning must be an à la carte menu where you can pick and choose what you have to conform to. So is that the official zoning decision on this property?
That is our investigation. That is our response to you from the Board of Selectmen.
So, okay, so.
And again, you'll hit, we'll talk about it tonight. We'll talk about the investigation that was asked and that we conducted, and that's now, we had a response, which you've already received. But right now, this is just public comments for anything on the agenda. If there's anything new, please talk us about. If not, we're going to have a discussion on basically everything and go from there.
Okay, but the response doesn't answer any of our questions.
And there's avenues that you can take for that. But tonight, we're going to discuss the investigation and go from there. But there's avenues that you can take on that to go from there.
Meaning going to the ZBA?
Yeah, I mean, again, we're in public comment, but you could have, you know, you could do, if he's not conforming, right, you could do his own complaint through the Building Department, which, you know, to us, through the Building Department. You could reach out to the Planning Board to discuss the issues with the approved site plan. You could file an appeal of the investigation with the Zoning Board of Appeals, or discuss with your lawyer, you know, avenues to take.
That's what I was looking for. We can appeal this to the ZBA.
What's that?
We can appeal this to the Zoning Board. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Any other further public comment? The time is 6:55. We had a public hearing at 6:40 for a request to transfer an all-alcohol common victory license to Tiki Garden to Two Gals Sports Bar and Grill Incorporated, and new entertainment license at 201 North Quincy Street. Do we have a motion to open this?
Make a motion open to the public hearing?
Second.
Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's now open.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Tom Truax of Salem, Massachusetts. Here on behalf of the proposed corporate transferee. With me directly to my right is Carol Rodriguez. She is the president of the corporation. She's also a 50% shareholder, and she's also the proposed license manager. And directly to her right is her, excuse me, is Grace Rodriguez. That's Carol's wife, who is a 50% shareholder in the corporation as well. The underlying transaction is pretty straightforward. It's a purchase of the assets of the Tiki Garden, including the Section 12 Restaurant All-Alcoholic Beverages License. This is a cash deal. There's no bank financing, no seller financing at all. As for experience, both Carol and Grace come before you with many, many years of experience in the food industry. Carol comes before you with over 33 years of experience, having worked as a franchisee, Dunkin' Donuts franchisee for 13 years, and as a district manager of Dunkin' Donuts for over 33 years. Grace comes before you with about 36, almost 36 years of experience in the restaurant business, having previously owned two restaurants, one for five years, another for two years. And in the other 30-some-on-six years, she also worked at four other restaurants, all of which were alcohol-serving restaurants. She is also a Johnson &amp; Wales Culinary School graduate, and she'll be in charge of the kitchen and work in the back. In terms of the operation of the business, both will be devoting their full-time energies to this new endeavor. And they will, as the name implies, this will be a sports bar, different from the Chinese restaurant that was before. The initial hours will be Monday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sundays from 6:00 to 2:00. Obviously, in some of those off-hours, they can't serve alcohol, and they're aware of that, but they'll still be serving meals. We did notice from the current licensee, license, that there was a 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. license hours on Sundays, and since the statute does allow a 12 noon opening on Sundays, we would respectfully request that the board would consider a 12 p.m. opening for alcoholic beverages on Sundays. As for layout, they plan to keep basically the same for the time being. It's going to be pretty much a facelift. The main reason for buying the, this location was for the assets of the corporation, assets of the business, as well as the liquor license. Finally, all staff will, they intend to have approximately six staff, two behind the, in the kitchen, and three on, three or four at the, out in the restaurant area. And all will be required to be tip-certified, and that's about it. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Open up to the board if anyone has any questions, concerns, comments.
So you plan to close both the kitchen and the bar down at 10:00 p.m. at night?
I mean, we would like to keep the license as is, except for the Sunday hours, but we just want to see how things go at the beginning, and the hours are going to be reduced at the beginning, just to see how things, how the customer base is, how they react to the, the new location, the new, the new concept here.
Just be aware that you'll have to come back in front of us if you want to extend that from 10:00 p.m.
Right, but my only, my only point to the board is that the current license is until 1:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday.
The current liquor license, yes.
Right.
Yep.
Again, I'm not sure how Abington does it, but we'd like to keep the license hours the same. The operating hours projected at the beginning will be to 10:00 p.m.
Well, you can keep the license, but you can open and close whenever you want. Yeah.
That's what our, that's the.
I would suggest keeping it the way it is, yes.
Any other comments from the board?
There is the issue, there's an entertainment request, too.
There also is an entertainment license before the, the board. This is for televisions and for.
Jukebox.
Can I take that after the public hearing?
What is no further questions?
I have no questions.
No questions?
Does anyone, any residents here speak on it?
Just a thank you mask, but.
Again, I'm from New York. It's all right.
That's not a bad thing.
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
You can.
Please step up to the microphone, just so we can hear you.
Step right up here and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is May Ly. I'm the owner of Tiki Garden for 44 years, and I'd like to retire. The town, the firemen, and the police department have been great through me all these years. I have no complaints. I'm just getting old, and I'd like to retire. And I hope that these people will get the same respect that you've given me in all these years.
Thank you.
So Tim, you did a motion to close?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second. Okay. Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's closed. I'll obtain a motion. It looks like we'll do two motions for the economy, two licenses, and then we go to the entertainment license.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the all-alcohol common vehicle license from Tiki Garden to Two Gals Sports Bar and Grill.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Not many further discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous?
And I'll make a motion that we approve the application for entertainment license for Carol Rodriguez, Two Gals Sports Bar and Grill.
Second. Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
When do you think you'll open up?
We're shooting for August 1st. We still have to finish our obligations by guarding jobs. We are shooting for August, opening day of August 1st.
Alright, well, let us know.
Sure. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Close the mask.
Are you giving the mask for the second permanent?
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Time is now 7:03. We have 6:45 p.m. public hearing for a request for a new commercial garage license by Eduardo De Oliveira, doing business as Columbia Auto collision Incorporated, 761 Bedford Street. I have a motion to open that hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
We have a second on that?
Second.
Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, it's open. Do we have anyone here to speak on that? Just step up, say your name and address, please.
Eduardo De Oliveira, 761 Bedford Street, Abington.
How's it going? You want to tell us a little bit about?
Alright, I own auto dealership business for almost 10 years now. We located over in Whitman, Columbia Autobody, and we're kind of expanding more, and we just found this location probably like almost a year ago. And we like to bring our business here to Abington, and we're here to ask the departments that we need to operate in the business there.
Okay.
So is this the Old Damon Pontiac?
Yes.
So your property is the Damon Pontiac, and then across the street as well?
No, just the left side of Damon Pontiac.
Just the left side?
Yes.
And you can fit 158 cars on that?
No, the whole parking lot there might fit 158 cars. Not that I want to put 158 cars there.
And that's what you're asking us for?
So, must refuse.
Is a license on the property?
It is.
So we need something showing the separation of the vehicles, where your vehicles are gonna be, and where the used cars are gonna be.
As of right now, there, they are all one big lot, but we designated the back line for the cars for the body shop, but it's not 158. Probably missed information here. We don't need more than like 20 cars parked in the arena.
We require every business that has a combination of used cars and repair or auto body to have a plot plan showing the designated spaces for your business, as well as the used car business. And I don't see a plot plan here at all.
We don't have the plot plan, yes, we don't. We can provide that to you guys for the next hearing.
And we don't know what the license...
The license, they have unlimited license there, as I know, because I've been talking to them, but we can bring up a plot plan for you guys with the designated part for the auto body shop.
Typically, what they do is, LA, you know, it's such a, you know, right, it's such a business, so it has to be defined where this is going. I'm totally not against this. I want to approve it for you, but we've made everyone else in this situation give a plot plan of where the used car business is and where the auto body business is.
Right.
So, I think we're gonna need that.
We could, I mean, if the rest of the board wants, we can continue this to our next meeting. You think two weeks would be enough time for you to...
Yeah, two weeks would be enough time. I can have the engineer like draw a plot plan, and they might have, actually, they have all the cars, so they might have it. We just need to show where's the body shop and where's their cars.
Yeah, and I'm not sure about this garage license either, but I mean, it does say you're requesting 158 cars.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
He says 150 monthly, so I'm thinking, I'm thinking when he was broken, thinking...
Oh, they're thinking it was total. Right, three a day. Exactly. Right, but yeah, I can't approve that and then have 158 cars on the lot. So, yeah, that would be like at one given time, how many?
Turnaround.
Yeah, right. So what we're looking for, the number of cars for repairs, like at one given time, how many cars would be on the property?
Oh, not more than like 15.
Right.
Okay.
How many cars are written there for repair? How many will fit inside the building? How many you'll be storing outside? How many employers and how many customers?
Do you want me to redo the application?
Leave it open.
Yeah, I mean, you can just amend this application, right?
Yep.
I would hold off until you get the site plan and see how many cars the used car business is gonna have, and then, you know, I mean, if you can work on 10 or 15 at a time, whatever, you know, and then, you know, you might be up to 20 for yourself.
Yeah, that's average. Yeah, because I have it monthly on that. I have it at 150 monthly, so I thought it was just a turnaround time. Okay.
So, I'll just make a motion at this time that we continue this meeting until June 28th, say 6:40.
Okay, hopefully if you get that to us, we should be able to approve it.
So it'll be the same time, two weeks, Monday night, and then, assuming you have all that stuff, we'll be able to vote on it.
And you'll amend that? We don't have to, you'll amend the application?
You can...
We can amend it at this time.
We can amend it.
Bring up your plot plan. You can amend it up there. We'll initial it.
Perfect. Okay.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you. See you in a couple...
See you soon.
Thank you. Alright. So next up on the agenda is old business. Update on 022 Helm Street, 662 Adams Street, and North Quincy Street. Scott, do you want to...
So you did have several pieces of correspondence from Amy Questle at KP Law regarding these three properties. First one, 022 Helm Street. We sent along all the information that we had, actually, on 022 and 62. Anything that was down in the Building Department, we forwarded along to Amy Questle, and she did a review of what was there and came up with her memos to the board. As far as 022 Helm Street, most of the correspondence was also supplied by Sean Riley to my office, and prior to that, to the Building Department office. And it spelled out the grandfathering provision. When a property is considered grandfathered, it's because it had been in existence prior to the zoning change or the zoning creation. So depending on when zoning actually came in town, whatever had been the use of that property up until that point would be considered grandfathered. So, and then if they changed, and there was a zoning, and there was a business that was, you know, in place, and they changed the zoning, typically that zoning or that use that was in place prior to the zoning would be considered grandfathered. So it would, basically, the idea is it prevents a town from creating something or creating a law that would take away somebody's previous rights that they already have. So you have the analysis in front of you on both of these items. I think specifically with the first one with 022 Helm Street, it appeared that it, to us, that it had been grandfathered, that this property was used as some sort of a storage prior to the zoning change. Everything that we could see, or at least coming from Marshall's office, there was a letter that went out to Mr. Creighton in the past. As far as whether there's any LLC set up, or whether there's a, you know, a business name, or we don't have that information. I don't have that information. Apparently, the town clerk doesn't have that information. You know, why not? I don't know. I don't know if it wasn't requested when this went in. If it, again, if it had been there prior to some sort of a zoning change, it's been there for quite a while. Again, this is a determination on the use. It's really not whether it's properly situated with the Secretary of the Commonwealth. But that being said, this matter and the next matter, there is an ability now, there's been a request for a determination, and this is, this would be it, and there's the ability for this to be appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals or to a court. I think the proper form would be to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals first.
So the residential house that's on Helm Street, that was pre-existing?
From what I understand, everything there was pre-existing, correct?
I see.
The storage, the use of the storage, and the use of the house.
So if the residents wanted to, if we were to vote to accept Amy's decision here, the residents could appeal to the zoning board?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Would have any further comments on Helm Street?
What's the situation for open salvage for our town?
Open storage?
Well, yeah.
Or like a salvage facility?
Well, junkyard would need a class...
I don't know that junkyards are allowed. I don't know that this, I don't know that we're talking about a junkyard here, to be quite honest with you, from the correspondence that we've had.
You might not like the looks of it, but I mean, it's not, they're not stripping vehicles and selling the parts off, so it's not a junkyard per se.
Okay. No, I'm just wondering with all the mechanics there, I'm just trying to get a clear picture.
Yeah, again, I don't know what the provisions are for a junkyard or the allowable use of a junkyard. I think it would probably be with special permit, or in this particular case, if it was a junkyard prior to the creation of the zoning article, it would probably be grandfathered, but I don't believe that's the case here. I think it's just storage.
I believe a junkyard would need a class three license, and I don't know if we have any of those issued.
I think before we make any decisions, hardcore decisions, that we make sure that this isn't for, or licensed for a junkyard, or whatever the situation may be.
You're not licensing anything tonight.
Oh, I know. Oh, yeah. I'm just putting it out there.
Okay. Any further comments from the board on Helm Street? Scott, do you want to 662 Adams Street?
So similarly, 662 Adams Street...
You had your chance to speak earlier.
Speaking on the matter, I just thought I'd add something to the discussion.
I know, and that's why I had public comment earlier. I let you speak then and say what you need to say on the matter. You did give a good amount of questions and some information for us, and I appreciate that, but at this time, we just...
How do we comment ahead of time if we don't know what you're gonna discuss? Yeah, we didn't know which way the discussion was going, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be beneficial hearing from the public. I'm not, I just think it would be more helpful for us.
Okay. How does the board feel?
I mean, we're not voting on anything.
Yeah.
Because I mean, we can...
At the end of this, I would recommend you either vote to accept it or not accept it.
I have no problem if they want her to speak, but, you know, we've heard everything for a long time from everyone, so if it's anything new, then that would be fine, but if you're gonna rehash everything...
One question.
Okay.
Okay, Bill Creighton, 53, Vineyard Road, Abington. What's the name of the business that's operating there right now? I've been to the building inspector, the town clerk, the town manager, and the fire chief. Nobody can tell me the name of the business that is operating there right now. I believe there are tenants for the business. In the names I have heard, I checked the Massachusetts State Secretary of State Corporation's database, which everybody was a business in the state is supposed to be registered with. And a couple of names I've heard, I went on there and checked, and they are not listed. So what is the name of this business that's operating on the property?
Whatever Michael Noonan is operating under. I mean, he must be collecting rents from the people that are parking there.
I have not been able to locate that on the state corporation database.
Maybe he's not a corporation. He can be a DBA.
No.
I mean, that's not really our issue here.
But what we looked at was the use, whether it was grandfathered or not.
The complaint was on the use of the property.
Yeah.
Not on the use of the business. It's on the use of the property, and that's what you asked, and that was a complaint. That's what we had to hear.
That's part of it. Like you're just granting a permit to somebody to operate those operating hours.
We're not granting a permit. Again...
I know you're not granting a permit, but you don't even know who's operating this. There's no operating hours for this business? That's why there's a truck starting up at 4 o'clock in the morning, waking everybody up, because there's no operating hours to prevent them from operating.
Because they're not operating a business. They're parking vehicles there.
They're waking the whole neighborhood up.
I understand, but they're not operating a business. They're not repairing vehicles. They're parking trucks there, and they're starting up in the morning and driving away. And at the end of the day, they're parking back there.
There's work, in addition to that, there are other tenants. There's other work going on there, moving of dirt and stuff like that. Who's the property owner? What's the business name?
We all know who the property owner is.
It's a trust.
Okay. So that's who owns it, then? You just answered your question.
But what's the name of the business?
Whatever the trust is, that's the trust that owns the property.
It's a business.
Okay. Wouldn't it be beneficial for the town to know what exactly kind of business is going on on this property? I mean, I don't, I don't want to be skeptical or anything, but, you know, we had a similar situation with North Quincy Street, where we weren't sure what was going on behind the scenes there. We didn't know what businesses were renting there from the owner. I just, I just advise caution.
I believe the fire chief has been up there and has inspected it, and has been in touch with the owner of the trust. So, I mean, he didn't seem to have an issue with it the last time he spoke here.
Yeah, I think we're going a little off subject on the use. That's what we're looking at right now.
This is that the use, the use on the property is allowed, correct? We're not looking at what business, what the use of the property?
Exactly. It was the use. It really doesn't matter who owns it or what the name is on it.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street, a member of the Planning Board, but speaking on behalf of myself, not the board itself. 22 Helm Street is a residential property according to the assessors map. It is a residential use. There apparently is somebody living there. You cannot, under our bylaws, have a residential and a commercial use in this district at the same time. If it's being used for residential use, you cannot also use it for a commercial purpose. If you're using it for a commercial purpose, you cannot also use it for residential use. This is the same issue we had on Adams Street. There are some districts in town where you can have a joint use. The transportation, transit-oriented development district, our business district of North Abington Center, you can have multiple uses. In this district, you cannot have two uses on the same property. If somebody's in that house, living there, it can't also be a commercial property. So I don't know what the situation is.
So unless, of course, they were both pre-existing non-conforming uses. So if they both were in existence together prior to the zoning, that said you can't do that, then they would be grandfathered.
You know, when the zoning applied here, that changed for this use?
Wouldn't know.
The difference with this and the Adams Street property would be that the Adams Street property was currently being used as residential... Adams Street property was currently being used as residential, which was the non-conforming use.
Right.
And when they wanted to change it back into, and become conforming, then they could no longer continue the non-conforming use. The change of use had triggered it. But in this case, up on Helm Street, the contention is that the uses up there were pre-existing, both of them non-conforming.
Going back to the 50s, when the zoning code was first adopted?
It's the information that I have from, that was given from Sean Riley and from the Building Department that I sent off to KP Law.
Just making sure.
So, so just to clarify further, Amy Quessell, our town council, looked into this, reviewed everything, and, and wrote this for us?
That is correct.
So our town council is, this is their stance after review? Get it?
Um.
Just state your name and address on what time?
Scott Kearney, 652 Adams Street. So based on the, what you just read about the grandfathering of the non-conforming use, that means it's in existence and whatnot, what's, there's a difference between a conforming use and an allowed use. Do you see what I'm saying? You can't differentiate between an, an allowed use and a conforming use, that 662, it's a non-conforming lot, so an allowed use would have to conform, otherwise it's?
Yeah, but we're not, that debate is not something that I'm going to get into you, into with you, that was, that's addressed in this memo, and we can go down, back and forth, the rabbit hole of that all night long, and will not, will not agree. Your best bet is to take this determination, if the board accepts it, and file an appeal.
Okay. I, I just feel like we're both getting two different answers on the grandfathering protections, that's what I don't understand.
One, as Scott said, Helm Street was grandfathered.
Yeah.
Adams Street, they went for a change of use.
So wouldn't the?
Which voided the residential.
Wouldn't the allowed use have to conform to the zoning bylaws?
On, on your property?
On, on my neighbor's property, wouldn't the allowed use have to conform? To be a conforming?
The, the use does conform.
The use?
That is an allowable use in that industrial district.
It's an allowed?
The, the use conforms to zoning. You're saying that the dimensions of the lot do not conform to zoning, but the use does conform.
But, but aren't?
How can the use conform if the lot doesn't?
The lot?
It's not an alacara.
It is.
You can't choose what it has to conform with.
And then that should be the basis of your appeal, I can only go by what town council put out here.
But, I just feel like there, the Helm Street is the opposite of ours, and it's, I mean, by, by Ms. Quessell's logic, then we could turn our, our property into like a hotel, a swimming club, a fraternity, a golf course, like, because technically it would be grandfathered, right?
Is that an allowable use?
An industrial property, yeah.
There you go.
All right, let's do it.
Anything further from the board on 0 Helm Street?
No.
022, okay. Scott, do you want to go to 662 Adams Street?
I think we covered it, it was, again?
98.
Again, it was?
That's separate from the 180. 170.
What's that?
180.
Go ahead.
All right, so, so, as you can see in the letter, it's understanding that the residential use of it was a pre-existing non-conforming use, the open lot storage of registered trucks and trails for temporary storage is the allowable use, they can't have, in this particular case, changing the property from a pre-existing non-conforming use residential to a conforming use, industrial change of use applies, which states any non-conforming use is changed to a conforming use, it shall not therefore be put into any non-conforming use. Basically what she's saying is, what they're doing is, if they're going to use it as their conforming use, they have to discontinue the residential use. She's prepared to send out a, and I think I sent you a draft copy, of a cease and desist letter for, specifically for the residential use. And she also, in that letter, the memo to the board, Ms. Quessell does get into the, the property not meeting the dimensional requirements, and therefore, the use may not change from residential, but she does address this, that the, you know, I, I don't know if, Ms. Kearney brought up the powers of her as building inspector case, or if Amy was just putting it in here, but she says that it, it is a different scenario, the property is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, Emma, and in her opinion, dimension relief is not required to convert the use to a conforming use, and here the conforming use is additionally not introducing any new dimensional non-conformities, therefore, in Ms. Quessell's opinion, enforcement in that is not applicable. And again, I understand that they obviously don't agree with this, or with Ms. Quessell's assertions, and they do have the ability to appeal this to the local Board of Appeals, and then obviously into the courts.
Courts, um, so on Adams Street, does the board have any comments or questions?
The only thing I have on Adams Street, and it's actually 67 Oak Street, that's the next issue that needs to be addressed, the owners of 67 Oak Street never even showed up for the fill permit with the planning board, so I think that's something that we may have to look into.
Yeah, I believe?
I think planning has sent that to town council, so?
They have, yeah.
I just wanted to mention that, though.
Okay.
Can I say something quickly?
Anything further on the, hold on one second, anything further from the board? Any questions? Any comments on this?
Is there an existing cease and desist letter for the residential use?
Cease and desist letter on Adams was to get them to the site plan review, which they've done, they've completed. A cease and desist letter will now be going out to say you cannot use it, the residential portion of it. That one?
They've been using the house as residential, and now they can't anymore.
Okay. So when is that?
That's going out within the next couple of days.
Okay.
And then, so? Served by sheriff.
Okay.
I just clarifying?
Yes.
That you guys are just trying to take a vote on what council's opinion was, and whether they approve or disapprove? You can go to zoning board and?
No, I just wanted to know if I'm getting a response to my other question.
We were tasked, we were asked, we opened an investigation, we had town council look and do an investigation, and they have given us a response. Town council for the, for the town of Edmonton has given us a response per our request, per an investigation that was asked, inquired about, we opened, we did. These are the responses, and that's what we're going over here. Again, if there's something going on, a zoning complaint can be put in through the Building Department. They could reach out to the planning board to discuss the issues with the approved site plan. They could file an appeal of our investigation with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Or they could also, and first probably, talk to their own council, their attorney, and discuss their options, which we've talked about a little bit here.
We're not trying to make it difficult, we're just trying to say we're approving, we, we're taking what our council has advised us.
We asked council to this, they did, they've given us a response, we're just reviewing this and, and taking a vote to approve it or not.
Okay.
There is other options?
Whether we approve this or not, what, what happens moving forward?
It's, if anyone doesn't agree with what town council said, they have the option to appeal to zoning board, or, or courts, or both, or the planning board, I guess.
Okay.
But I would think, from our standpoint, if we accept this, case closed, as far as we're concerned.
We were, we were asked to do an investigation, we did, we've concluded our investigation.
This is the investigation.
So we're, we're, we'd be taking a vote to approve that this is the investigation, and this is the official response from the Board of Selectment. So, as you've heard, there's a lot of questions, and there, there seems to be a lot of information here, which can move forward if the parties choose to appeal and do their, you know, what, what they want, so, and we've heard it tonight, and, you know, that's, like, I think one of the members of the board said, that's, you know, almost in a basis, their basis right there. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We, we will be getting a written response from Marshall's investigation that we filed and complained for last year?
This will be all you're getting.
Fifty-four weeks later?
This will be the response for all your, your questions?
This is it.
Really? You would send that?
Yes, so this will be our, this will be our response, we do have some correspondence from Marshall that, I did say we'll get it to you, we'll get some copies to you, we will get that too. Can we do that tonight before the end of the meeting?
The copies, sure.
You should email it to us or something for more.
I'll get them copies of it.
So yeah, that, you'll get that, whether it's emailed tonight?
Copies of the correspondence that we read out earlier.
Just something right?
Yes, yep.
And I think separately, though, I think if you guys vote on those, two items separately, we do have the, I think I gave you the answers to the 98 complaint that Michelle's brought up.
Yes.
And I think that we'll probably deal with that right after, because it is a separate complaint than these issues.
Okay.
But I will say that the other update that's part of that, the North Quincy Street, just to let you know that Sue managed to get everybody to sign and get everything that we needed for the court filing for that, so it was like herding cats, but we got all the information together, so we managed to get it, to get it back to KP Law, and they'll be within the next day or so filing in Superior Court.
Okay. So on these, we'll, we would entertain a motion, and then we'll go into this next?
Yeah, I think you should do it separate.
Okay. So, you have in front of you the two responses from town council, I would entertain a motion if we're going to accept them, or any other motion?
So I'll make a motion to accept KP Law's correspondence filing on 0 and 22 Helm Street.
Okay, the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Just for you folks, just so you know, I'm not happy with it either, and I feel for you guys, I really do, but hopefully, by us closing this, you guys can now move on to your next steps, whatever that may be.
Yeah.
Please, we're not giving up on you.
I know, Mike, I feel that way.
I know, I know, I know, but this is how it works, this is the process, it's a long process, and I, you know, my heart goes out to you, just so I, you know?
I just wish there was enforcement along the way for the last year or three months.
Well, that?
Regardless?
That issue has been resolved, too.
Okay.
I apologize.
It's also going on.
Well, I understand, but?
Further, we're going to be discussing?
Very similar, but you guys are handling it very differently.
So we have, again, one of the agenda items that we'll talk about shortly, when we get to it, is inspectional services, so, which we can talk further on that.
And you can, and like we've said, we've talked about here tonight, like, you can appeal, appeal this, you know, however you see fit.
We pay town council to do an investigation, and this is what she comes back with, I mean, we can't?
You don't have to accept that. I pay town council, too.
That's right.
You can take that advice and throw it away, if you don't feel attacked with it.
So, at this time, we have a motion and a second on the, on the floor. Do we have any further motions? Okay, I'm hearing none, so we have a motion and a second, Tim's motion to accept 0 and 22 Helm Street, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. We have floor one, okay. So, next would be 662 Adams Street, do we have any motions on that?
Motion to accept council's report.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, okay. Any further discussion on 662 Adams Street from the board? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Floor one again, okay, and on North Quincy Street, we don't have to do anything? Okay. Okay, so on this?
Yeah, so on the, the, what, chapter, yeah, the 98 complaint that's been filed by Ms. Kearney. So, the 98 complaint is, and to read it to you, is upon the complaint of an abbot of the selectmen shall investigate the use of adjoining land, which although within the allowed use under the zoning bylaws, or health regulations, is alleged to be conducted in such a manner that is, that it unnecessarily or unreasonably interferes with the use of quiet enjoyment of the complainant's land. So, what the board has to look at is, is the use allowed, and I think we've pretty much covered that in the memo from KP Law, plus they went through the site plan review. And is it being, you know, the next question, is it being used in a manner that is unnecessarily or unreasonably interfering with the complainant's use of, or quiet enjoyment of their land? And then I think, you know, so that's sort of the discussion, or the thoughts that you have to go down now, is, you know, keeping in mind that it is an industrial zone, it's Route 58. The property was approved, or, or the allowable use is for storage, so assuming they're in compliance with their site plan and what they're supposed to be doing, is it unnecessarily or unreasonably objectionable? And then if they're not in compliance, and they're not doing what they're doing, or what they're supposed to be doing, and then it is becoming unnecessarily, or unreasonably interfering with the quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood, then you have to act upon it. So that's your task, and I think that that is a, that was a separate complaint.
Okay, so on that, discussion from the board? You've heard what Scott has to say in regards to that, do we have any discussion?
So we're just deciding if a storage facility on Route 58 is?
Well, it's this particular one. It's not a, you know, I mean, in, in, if they were using it according to their site plan review, or are they doing things that they shouldn't be doing, which might, you know, if they're actually out there working, or, you know, if, if he's doing more than just storage, I mean, the idea is, with his approval, that he can bring his trucks there, he can store them, he's not supposed to be working on them, he's not supposed to be acting as a mechanic, you know, there shouldn't be, on a regular basis, constant traffic coming in and out of there. And if that is the case, then there are, you know, then that's an issue, and there's probably sanctions that the board can take.
So how do we find out if that's an issue? What do we have? Please, please, sir, not while I'm talking. Well?
Again, I think it, you know?
What has the Building Department done?
They, you know, when, when they have gone by, they've reported to us that they haven't seen traffic coming in and out of there. I've gone by, I've seen usually one or two trucks there. You know, I think we could bring this to Sullivan in, and ask him what's going on. Again, he's recently been through the site plan approval, it's really just starting, I mean, what's been approved is beginning now.
Okay.
You know, so I think it may be more of a monitoring situation. I think the complaints can come, you know, should be made through the Building Department, the Building Inspector?
The Building Inspector has not received any complaints?
Well, they've received numerous up until this point, yes.
Right, since the new site plan has been?
But something has been going on since?
Maybe the building cliff over here, too.
No, it's got, since the site plan approval?
The site plan approval was for storage of registered vehicles.
Right, since then, has he been doing repairs?
Why don't you come up to the, come up here for a second, yeah?
Yeah, I'll try.
Everything before that doesn't matter with this.
But again, we're talking from the site plan approval?
From May 27.
May 27th, until current date today.
There's still a family living in the house, and there's still work going on on a constant basis.
Well, we're, we're taking care of the family by July 1st, that's one of two.
So just, just, what he was approved for, as far as I'm, I'm aware, is an?
So just, just, what he was approved for, as far as I'm, I'm aware, is an H-three storage of registered vehicles. They're plow trucks. He removes the plows from the trucks. So now it's storage of equipment which needs the H-five usage and the special permit.
I believe it said equipment also.
Sorry?
I believe it said he could store equipment but not within twenty feet of the fence.
Not on the, not on the approved site plan. It's only an H-three usage, sir.
Again, though, this, this complaint is going, not so much as whether he's in compliance just in general.
Right.
But is what he's doing there creating, um, right?
Working on vehicles and running the vehicles and-
Is it, is he making noise? Is he making it impossible for them to enjoy?
Let's read again. Upon the complaint of an abbot, the Selectmen shall investigate the use of adjoining land which although within the allowed use under the zoning bylaws, chapter one seventy-five or health regulations, is alleged to be conducted in such a manner that is unnecessarily or unreasonably interferes with the use or quiet enjoyment of the complainant's land.
Believe me, we wouldn't have been here this many times if it wasn't happening.
Yeah, but like I said, that's all before May twenty-seventh. The issue now is if he's doing something he's not supposed to be doing since May twenty-seventh.
Yes, sir.
You're going to have to present us proof and you're going to have to file it through the, uh, building office.
And that's not a hundred percent, the way, the way I'm interpreting is even if he's doing something he's supposed to be doing.
Yeah, if it's object, if it's creating.
Yeah, if it's creating a new-
Now, what he's supposed to be doing should not create-
So the-
But the next day after May twenty-seventh, uh, he has a video of him out there working on a truck.
Correct.
You guys must have a weekend.
The fence is open, guys, come on over.
I've been to the property.
That's what we need. Four kids, trucks, I might take you up on it.
So that's what we're going to need going forward. If there's an issue, you're going to have to document it and file a complaint and then we can handle it. Because what, everything that happened before then is out of, out of our hands now.
Okay, so do you, do you need a new ninety-one complaint or do you just need-
No, this is officially an opening that, in my opinion. You've formed your complaint.
Okay.
And I think now-
So now you need proof.
Now support it.
If there's stuff going on.
If there's something going on, support it.
No problem.
Beyond what you're supposed to be doing.
Just, just the nature of the way he stores the plows separate from the vehicles, he's constantly breaking down and upfitting the vehicles, um, running stuff with the fork truck and whatnot. And we'll, we'll get your proof, but this, he, it's not just, there were a couple of weeks where he was real close to a site plan approval, where his lawyer probably told him, hey, behave, whatever, that it was actually quiet over there for three, four days a week. And it, you know, we could deal with that as long as he follows the, the buffer zones and all that other stuff, but it's not like that. It's just the nature of his business, upfitting the plows, breaking down the plows, repairing the plows, moving equipment with the fork trucks.
Once a year, you know?
I'm sorry?
Take them off and put them on. I mean, that's, shouldn't be something he's doing every day.
Is he taking the plow off and is he taking it on and off five or ten times a day or?
Well, right now, he's storing most of the trucks at sixty-seven Oak because I imagine he's getting ready for his, his site work. But the plows, the plows are all up against the fence as well as the, the used truck bed that I've showed you multiple pictures of that he uses as a dumpster with oil filters and cables and all kinds of hazardous waste. There's a fuel tank in there. I've got video of him pressure washing a fuel tank just about a week ago. Um, I'll, I'll send that, I'll send, I'll send everything, but there's no question it's still going on and it's going to go on. And it is, the H-three usage does not allow the storage of the plows separate from the trucks. No equipment, he shouldn't be having fork trucks there, he shouldn't have, have bobcats, any of the stuff, any of the sundries, um, chemicals, fuel.
Well, we're, we're going on two separate, we're, we're splitting here with this. We're, we're looking at the-
Well, just, yeah, just going with it, he's not using it the way he's using it.
I understand, but just know that we're, we're separating here a little bit from what the, what this reads.
So if he's not abiding by the site plan, then you should contact the, uh, planning board and file a complaint with the building department. And you should, uh, document if he's violating it, uh, and then report back to us. And then we'll call him in here in the future, I mean.
Okay, you, you just want, you just want documentation since May twenty-seventh?
Exactly.
In accordance with, yes, chapter ninety-eight, this land use ninety-eight, section ninety-eight, chapter one, investigation by Selectmen.
Okay, no problem. So we will just supplement that, that, that complaint with evidence.
And again, yeah, so, again, I, I won't read it again, but you know what I mean? Just reference it to, that's specific to this section ninety-eight, chapter one.
Okay. We'll, we'll just, we'll get you some pictures and videos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that'll probably just go into old business.
Yeah, we'll put that, yeah, on old business. All right. So now that old business is done, the next up will be the vote to approve the minutes from May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I make a motion, uh, to approve the minutes of May, of the, uh, meeting, May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
All right. Floor O with one of the stations. All right. So next up is food truck events, request for music. Scott, do you want to briefly discuss this, talk about them?
Do you want to? Does anybody else want to?
Yep, sorry, I'm, my apologies, you have to step right up.
No, I didn't know Katie was going to be here either. I was glad to see you were here.
I saw it online.
Okay, good.
So I just figured I'd show in.
Nope, perfect.
Always interesting being here. But, uh, my name's Katie, I'm a food truck owner, I own the truck, Ellie's Streets, I'm from Weymouth. We're happy with the night. You know, we're seeing a good crowd, we're getting really good feedback from everyone that comes. We're not having any parking issues. I know that there was a track meet last Wednesday at the same time, which we were like a little nervous of in the beginning. And, um, people kind of realized that they could park and walk in and I think it's all working out. So now that we've had a good couple of weeks going, we would like to add, um, live music to Wednesdays. When I say live music, it's just a guy or a, you know, a lady or gentleman strumming on a guitar. Not too exciting, but, um, you know, it definitely adds some niceness. People are, you know, kind of sitting and eating and picnicking and it would just add a nice little, little bit more.
And the music would start and stop at the same time as the food trucks?
Yes, yep.
And there's no, so it's not overly amplified or anything like that?
Personally, we have music in Hanover at our Forge Pond Park night. I cannot hear it in my truck, um, with the generator going, like, there's like a low roar from my truck and every truck and mine's more quiet than some of the others and I can't hear the music, but everyone else does. My dad comes every week, um, to both Hanover on Tuesdays and Wednesdays in Abington, he loves it, he can hear it. But, um, I can't, so I don't think it would cause any, you know, noise issues, but, um, definitely just add a little bit more to the night.
And is it solely acoustic or is it?
Yeah. It's solely acoustic, for sure.
So what if any?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A second then.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is the summer concert series. Again, nothing in particular, but if you guys want to get up and just talk about summer concerts and, uh-
You're going to sing.
Ken, you going to sing for us tonight?
I can, but usually have to have a couple cocktails first. I haven't had, and I haven't had enough tonight. As the Board of Selectmen's liaison to the Summer Concerts Committee, thank you for that appointment. I'm not as long-winded as Jan and also, also Peter McDonald is here, he's also on the committee. Nancy is, uh, Reed, you all know, is on the committee. She's traveling tomorrow, she got her hair done, so obviously she can't go out in the rain. We have an exciting lineup for you and I'm going to let Jan speak about it. I just have one question and a concern about, we love music. We just want to make sure that the music for, we, we want to make sure that the, the trucks stay where they are and don't go onto the fields, you know, um, only because, um, we were there last week and a lot of people saw some Selectmen there too, there's a lot of dogs. And we want everybody to enjoy the music in the evening. And if they have dogs, they can't go on the grass and they can't, so we were just kind of wondering where the music was going to be from. And we do have a suggestion, um, because we spoke about an event on the portico at the library and there's power there, so that would be great and acoustics would be great there, you know, in front of the library.
Yeah, I, I got the impression they didn't need any.
No, okay, we just want, we just had a concern because if you put someone on the stage there, you're not going to be able to hear them.
No, I don't, I, I didn't get the impression that was it at all.
That was all, so we just had a little concern about that because we spent a lot of money, you know, there's probably the only field in Abington doesn't have geese poop in it. And we spent a lot of money for that, devices up there. Actually, the school's called this week to find out what we use for that.
Well, and I know they, they stopped bringing the dog tree truck because, um, there were no dogs allowed, yeah. So then, they had that at, at Griffin's, but they did stop bringing it.
And I told Jan to kind of keep it, you know, it's been a long meeting, you got a lot of stuff to do, so. Jan, for all?
Thanks, Ken. Hi, Jan.
I'm trying to look like Nancy tonight, she loves to do this. This is just, we did a schedule this year, not a program, just because of the uncertainty of when things were going to open up. Originally it was going to be announced on May twenty-ninth that they were going from two hundred to two hundred and fifty outdoors. We can't have a four thousand dollar ban for two hundred and fifty people. No, not going to happen. And then all of a sudden, everything was going to go open up after we moved everybody to August first, because that was going to be the second announcement. So then we had to move everybody back. So it's been kind of a bouncing around. We could not get the community band in this year. They're going to do a Christmas concert, that'll be the first thing they do. And the committee voted as a whole that holding kids night this year just probably isn't a good idea with five hundred kids, um, all over the place. So, um, and face painting and stuff that you really can't do right now, uh, so we opted not to. So we kind of had to backtrack, we not opening the end of June, um, didn't make any sense to open on July fourth because, uh, because nobody's going to want to be there. So we're going to open July eleventh and we're going to go through our regular, um, season to the end of August, which is the week before Labor Day. So we moved everybody back from, you know, August first into early September, back to the regular schedule. Uh, we've got three returning bands, five new ones. The prices range anywhere from about twelve hundred dollars and I think the most expensive is forty-five hundred. So we put a lot of time, this is our seventeenth season. We do include last year as a season because we did do two concerts in the auditorium at the high school with the limited amount of people. Uh, we pre-recorded one for, to show the next week and Studio Two, The Beatles went live that night on Facebook from this auditorium here with that whole seven hundred and fifty people, I think there were ten people in the whole building. No clapping, no nothing. But it's funny because if you go to their website, they're using that now as a promo video, the one that was done here. So I think you'll be really happy. We decided to open with Dale and the Duds this year. It just seemed like the right group. We always close with them, but because of everything that's gone on, everybody knows them. We, when I put, first put out, um, some requests for fundraising on Facebook because we didn't do any in nineteen, we didn't do any in twenty, we had, um, like, reached like almost seventy-nine hundred people. The concert schedule's already reached four thousand, I hope they don't all come. But we have a very large venue and, uh, we do use loud music. Many people don't leave their homes because they can hear it and they love it. So, um, I think it'll be a good season. I think people are craving as, with the food trucks and stuff like that, something and, you know, it seems like they've had a good response to that. We get an amazing response with the concerts. Uh, The Beatles have brought in the largest to date of eleven hundred and forty people.
Wow.
And that was only two-thirds of the field use. The whole left side of the field wasn't even touched, or Riley Field, so. And the kids want to run out there and play. Anyway, I think it'll be a great season, we hope you'll be able to come. Like I said, Dale and the Duds, Studio Two, um, and Do-Off Deville are the only returning bands, everybody else is new. Hipshot, Nancy and I saw it down at the launch at the Hingham Shipyard. Yeah. We, yeah, excuse me, Peter, except for you saw one without us. We go to the launch at the Hingham Shipyard when they were having concerts. We've seen some really good stuff down there. Uh, The Reminiscence, they've been around as long as Dale and the Duds, but their music is oldies, but it's very different from what Dale and the Duds does, so I think it'll be enjoyed by all. The Baja Brothers was kind of like a last minute fill-in when, uh, we had to switch things around, we had talked about bringing them, uh, we had talked about doing a, uh, summer and winter concert and they were the person that we were, the other group that we were looking for. They've been around, this is their thirtieth anniversary, been around a long time, but I think it'll be really fun with a little bit of Jimmy Buffett and Beach Boys and some other stuff thrown in, they sound like a real fun band. Again, The Reminiscence, oldies, but I really liked them when we saw them in Hingham. They, um, offer some history with some of the pieces they do and it was stuff that I didn't even know, so it was kind of cool, just a little bit, just a little bit different. Mark Greel, I found him on the internet. Guy is amazing. Again, they're celebrating their thirtieth anniversary. Never heard of him before, but they can play music from every decade.
Covers everything, huh?
Everything. This guy can play five, six, seven instruments and they do some Latin. He has multiple different bands within his bands, but this is a ten-piece band.
Really?
Really, really, sounds cool. Uh, No Shoes Nation, Peter actually heard down at the launch at the Hingham Shipyard and it would have been really cool to do it last year because we were going to promote it as come see, hear Kenny Jusney music for free instead of paying at Gillette, it was like five-day letter, he was going to do two shows down there. And then, uh, we had already decided to close with Do-Off Deville. Any band that ends up having to go indoors and in nineteen they did because of the heat wave that we had, uh, we always offered them an opportunity to come outside. They had kind of great lights and everything going on behind. It's kind of like having an a cappella group, uh, doing doo-wop music but backed by a, backed by a five-piece professional band. So it was really cool with the lights and everything like that, so we thought that would be nice because the sun goes down about seven-thirty by the last concert. So, anyway, that's our schedule for this year, I think everybody will, uh, really enjoy. We really hope, uh, some of the younger people start coming out, we get, you know, different stuff and I'm sure Kenny's got some more to add, he's sneaking back.
No, just one thing. Trying to cut you off.
Yeah, he is.
There's a new bridge, thanks to CPA funds, and we're going to have a new sign up and ready to go for our first concert, so that's exciting news, so thank you CPA.
Oh yeah, CPA funding was amazing and, uh, the folks that, uh, for those of, that don't know it, out in cable land and for you folks here, the Riley Field, all with the track, NISB van stand area, that entire complex was all built with private funding. That was not done with town funding at all. And the new entrance, we applied for the CPA funding and it is considered open space and recreation, so it was built, Glenn LaPointe did, he was the lowest bidder, he put it, it finished, I think, like April of last year. It is fantastic, it could take the largest ambulance, we made sure it fitted, you know, was fitted for that, it can take anything.
Not going to be in.
No, no, no. We've been very lucky. I think we've had an ambulance up there once. But again, we do want to remind folks, because it is on here, for the town bylaws, this isn't just something we say, dogs are not allowed. We were starting to have problems up there with people not paying attention to them. Again, we paid a lot of money for those away with geese lights that the town departments are now, three years later, asking, "Oh, can we have the information that they got three years ago?" So, the away with geese lights are amazing. The geese were on the very first soccer field as you come in.
No geese allowed either.
We have, we have no goose, geese gaggle poop up here at all. That's why we don't, that's why we didn't want dogs in there. We don't want, put your blanket down and sit in it.
However, they will be selling hot dogs.
Yeah, so.
Will the Lions Club be set up?
The Lions Club will be selling their hamburgers and hot dogs and snacks and drinks and everything as they usually do, and cream will be up there with his traveling ice cream cart.
Awesome.
Kind of a simple, simple way of doing things. The Lions Club, when they originally started out, what, probably about 15 years ago, they were barely breaking even. Now, it's their biggest fundraiser.
Awesome.
And, and people start coming at 4:30 wondering why they're not cooking yet. So, it'll, it'll be fun. And we will be getting our handicap, I've already been in contact with John Stone. He gives us all the handicap signs and everything. We put up there, cover them on Sunday nights, and.
Awesome.
We still don't have enough handicap parking. So, anyway. But the bridge is beautiful. It'll allow people to, you know, we can keep the gates closed. It's still four, four feet wide. You can still get a wheelchair through it, and then you can open it up when you have traffic, whichever you want. So, very, it's looking nice. The sign's going to be similar to Griffins, but it's going to be amazing when it's put up. So, look forward to it.
Thank you, Jan.
Terrific.
Thank you.
And thank you. Thank you.
It's a piece of Americana.
I like it. Yeah.
Every day.
Okay, next up, discussion on Juneteenth.
Okay. So, let's see. As you may not, may not be aware, Juneteenth is one of the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. On June 19th, 1865, a Union general rode into Galveston, Texas, to announce that the Civil War had ended and slaves had been freed. With that being said, in July of 2020, Governor Baker signed into law a declaration that Juneteenth, excuse me, Juneteenth of each year be recognized as a holiday in the Commonwealth. This year, Juneteenth falls on a Saturday and is to be observed on Friday, June 18th, 2021. Now, while it is the intention of the town to observe Juneteenth this summer, the implementation of a new paid holiday would be a mandatory subject of bargaining with various town employee unions. With that said, the town will agree to grant all bargaining unit employees a paid holiday for Juneteenth, 2021, as a one-time, non-recurring holiday. By granting this holiday, the town reserves all of its rights to bargain over the implementation of the day as a permanent holiday. The town in no way intends to set precedent in this decision, does intend to bargain with each union individually at a later date. As the holiday approaches, my office will send out official notice of the holiday to all employees. Can we do that tomorrow? If you have any questions regarding this, I'll reach out. So, basically, and we've checked with most towns around us, there's very few that are not recognizing this. This is, you know, it's a recognized holiday, and we should treat it as such. It's an important day. So, we will close Town Hall this year on Friday, and going forward, you know, we'll observe it. We've already bargained it with a few of the units, and we'll bargain it with the rest of them. But I think we'll also, obviously, the few people that aren't in a unit will also benefit from it.
Okay.
You don't need to vote for us or anything tonight.
Nope. I do not. I just wanted to let you guys know and make everybody aware, and also just let everybody know that, you know, it is Juneteenth, and, you know, we should all be aware of it and keep that in mind.
So, next is discussion on forming an inspectional services department?
Yeah, as, I think, it's a, as you can see by some of the subject matter that we've discussed earlier, and just with my observations after a year here, the workflow and communications amongst the departments, it didn't seem to be, or didn't seem to be happening at all. There seemed to be complaints that would come in, and fingers would be pointed towards other departments, but there was a lack of communication or connecting those departments with one another. There was no follow-through, and it's just the way the system was. It was, it was just not, organizationally, it wasn't optimal. The past town that I worked in and where I had actually started off was in an inspectional services department, and I had, you know, sort of grew that department while I was there into a much bigger department. But the system that we were, used, worked very well. It was a system of communication between most of your land use departments. And so, basically, it starts off with a, an inspectional services director. That person would be the administrator and the coordinator of the Health Department, the Zoning Department, and the Building Department. What this allows for and what this will facilitate will be communication amongst those departments, as well as Planning Department, the Conservation Department. So, in my vision of this, we would make Marty our Health Director, current Health Director, our Inspection Services Director. And he would follow through with the day-to-day operation of all the, of the zoning board, of the zoning officer, the building inspector, the Health Department, and then making sure that as complaints or permits or licenses are filed, that all the departments are communicating and discussing any issues that are amongst that, and that they, they're followed through from beginning to end. So, ultimately, it creates a, you know, a better user or customer service experience, and ensures that, that these things don't fall behind or fall into some sort of void where things escalate to a point that people are very heated and upset about something. Whether it's lack of getting an inspection, lack of getting a result on a complaint, or just the ball being dropped and a permit not being issued. So, what I would recommend that we're going to do, what we would like to do, is, as you're all aware, the Building Commissioner left. We've separated with them, and I think this going forward, we would have our Inspection Services Director, like I said, it would be Marty. We will, I've discussed with our current provisional building inspector, James Banda. He is one test away of being licensed to be a building inspector, and then he has several more tests if he wants to become a building commissioner. But James, Jim has agreed that he'd like to work full-time. So, we would have him as our building inspector. We retain zoning enforcement and administration through Marion Wong Ryan. And I would take over the responsibilities of the Building Commissioner for now. And those are really the, those responsibilities, a sort of oversight of the final okay on compliance state, you know, with, when the liquor licenses that we approve. All of those facilities need a sign-off from a building commissioner. It's a requirement of the state. There would be review of any issues or anything that maybe that, a final review, I guess, of anything that the building inspector approves, or that the zoning inspector approves. Now, what I would recommend is we do this on a trial basis, and we'll review it in December and see if this is working. I think what my goal here, and I've talked to Jim Banda about is, for him, we would give him an increase in pay for his new responsibilities. If he passes and when he passes his final exam and he's a licensed building inspector, we'll probably increase him again. And then, if he can become building commissioner, we can move him up into the building commissioner. I'll no longer have to worry about doing that. In the interim, we'll work out, I'll work out a stipend with Marty for the extra work that he's going to be doing, and I'll request that this board issues me a stipend for probably up to two hours of my time that's going to be put towards being a building commissioner. But again, like I said, I would want to review this in December, at the end of the year, and see that it's still working, and that, and that we've improved our, our customer service experience. I think a lot of things that we'll see with this, again, will be the ability to track things. We can get back on putting our online permitting into place, and our online ability to, you know, better file for permits and complaints. Right now, the system is just not, it's not working very well. So, if things are still going well in December, we'll probably carry it through into July, and if it's still working after that, hopefully, by then, Jim Banda will have received his certificate to be a building commissioner. But if not, we'll, we'll deal with it and figure out how we're going to go forward then. So, that, that's my plan. I think I would want a motion from the board to at least, if you're, if you think it's a worthwhile endeavor, to go forward with it.
I'd just like to mention, Jim Banda. I've dealt with him, but everyone that I've talked to that has dealt with him likes him. And he's been very builder-friendly and very customer-friendly. So, I think, I think people will see a change in the building office with Jim in there, and I think that's a good thing.
We've already seen a very good change.
Yeah.
Will we need any further help in the office?
So, we may bring on, there is a, there has been some interest from an existing building inspector that we could use once a week if we do need it. But all, everything that I'm, including that, and it would be probably seasonal when we have busier times and slower times. But all this can be done within the existing budget of that department. We're not looking for any additional funding whatsoever.
Okay. And obviously, I think that's a good idea. We do a six-month review, maybe a 12-month review, a six and a 12-month review if we, maybe the motion is catered that way, that way, or.
It's a move.
All right. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right. Next up, discussion on responding to social media posts. Scott, do you want to talk again?
Yeah. So, it comes up from time to time, and, you know, where somebody may post something on Facebook that is just factually as far from the truth as can be imagined. And I know that we all have our urges to jump right out there and respond to it. And I, as a policy, I don't currently. It's not a written policy. It's just my own policy that I follow, and I have, I've always cautioned gentlemen on, on engaging and going down the rabbit hole with anybody on Facebook also. But I do think it's important that at times, you know, some information that's out there is, is just, it's so far against what we all know is, should be put out there. And I think that I'd like to have the ability to answer that stuff, and a, you know, a statement from this office, or from the Selectment Office, or from the Town Managers Office, that would go out in response, and it would not be to engage in the continual response. It would just be a simple statement of fact on what our position is. One of the, you know, at town meeting, within the budget, we had approved to have a, another administrative assistant, or actually, I think it won't be an administrative assistant, but somebody who's going to take over the administrative functions from Nancy for conservation and for zoning, and as well as a website content manager. And I think it would also be actually full-on social media content. With stuff would come out of this office that would be in reply, statements, they could be, you know, the press statements that I may put together that we would post, and then other information. We've already discussed, and we're working with Wayne to revamp the whole website. Again, the whole idea of it is to create a positive customer service experience, that if somebody wants to get on there and find information, they're finding what they need easily. But it'll also be, you know, coordinated, so that whatever we're saying that we're all aware of, that we're all in agreement, that it's all factual and consistent. So, that's my plan. I think I'll probably need some feedback on that, or some, you know, know how you guys feel about.
Any feedback from the board?
I think the towns should have been more active on social media years ago. In fact, we've been pushing it since at least 2018. So, I applaud it. It does need to be done smart and systematical, not, not just spur of the moment, reactionary to things. So, yeah, I'm all for it.
Would there be any expansion of social media to different platforms?
Absolutely. I think we have to look into reaching as wide an audience as we can. It'd certainly be nice to reach a, to get out and be able to reach a younger audience too, and engage them.
I was going to say, right now, Facebook is going to reach us in this room, but the younger generation.
Instagram is going to.
Yeah, Instagram is where you're looking at, a different thing.
I see no reason why Scott and Sue don't make TikTok videos.
At least weekly.
Yeah.
We'll discuss that.
But no stipend for that.
Maybe.
No stipend.
I'm sure Marty would do it.
Actually, Val Tagg, he would probably come in as well. He'd probably be on, you know, right?
Oh, for sure. Absolutely.
I don't believe I need a motion on that one.
Okay. Next up is the vote to approve auction of surplus land parcels as approved by town meeting vote of Article 10 of the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
Yeah. So, these particular parcels, as we've been discussing, there's going to be a, there'll be an auction coming up, and actually, on the 28th, at our next meeting, the auction company, as well as our treasurer, collector, Sonia Hud, will be here. And she's going to explain the process. It's been a lot of work, and it's a long time coming, but she's done a lot of really good work on getting this together. Tonight, all s we're discussing is several parcels that were town-owned parcels. They're not foreclosure parcels. So, most of the parcels that we're auctioning were foreclosure. These particular ones were just ones that were town-owned parcels, and then we, so we need a vote, and we need you to sign this particular to just these out of these parcels.
How many lots are there?
There's four. But there's many more, and we'll discuss that next week on what the other ones are.
So, the four parcels right now, you're looking for a vote?
Yep. So, as you can see, it's Bang Street. There's a parcel on Chestnut Street, Diane Circle, and 930 Washington Street.
Do you have that in the package?
No.
I don't think any of us have that. Do we have it?
It's probably mixed in somewhere with the one I gave out. So, there was a supplemental one, and I know the signed one in here. So.
Do you want me to just read them off?
I'll read them if you want.
All right.
So, it's a parcel of land there, unknown and numbered as 168 Bang Street, shown as Lot 172 on Town Assessors Map 23, consisting of .18 acres of land, more or less, conveyed to the town by deed of Greenwood Cushing dated March 30th, 1871, and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 373, page 282.
So, that's that little building that we're storing?
Yeah, I guess it used to be.
The water department.
Yeah. So, we're actually thinking that that probably netted us a decent amount of money. You know, it's, it's obviously an existing structure, can be rebuilt, reused. They can go for a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming use, probably. Next one, parcel of land situated on Chestnut Street, shown as Lot 32 on Town Assessors Map 57, consisting of .31 acres of land, more or less, conveyed to the town by deed of North Abington Cooperative Bank, dated July 19th, 1966, and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 3310, page 589. Apostle of land situated on Diane Circle, shown as Lot 37 on Town Assessors Map 13, consisting of .46 acres of land, more or less, conveyed to the town by deed of the Boston 5-Cent Savings Bank, dated October 27th, 1978, and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 4759, page 083. Again, I'm not sure whether that one will be buildable lot or not, but there is a possibility. I know we, we had reviewed a lot of these about a week ago, myself, Jim Banda, and the attorney that's working on this for us, and the auctioneers. So, some of these actually are pretty good pieces of land. Apostle Four is a parcel of land known and numbered as 930 Washington Street, shown as Lot 36 on Town Assessors Map 39, consisting of .27 acres of land, more or less, conveyed to the town by deed of Restus M. Nash, trustee under the will of Thomas H. J. Hunt, dated April 20th, 1896, and recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 717, page 347. Again, this was a parcel that although it's very small, it is possible that it is a pre-existing non-conforming parcel that was never in common ownership with the parcels around it, and could actually be a buildable lot. That being said, I think it's all, I think it was a tree, tree department maybe owned it at one time. It was, that's why it's a town parcel. I hear there's a lot of rocks out there.
Oh, there was a small building there at one time, I think, yeah.
So, again, these, you know, you know, we'll probably get more discussion on that next week when the auctioneers are here.
Are any of these buildings of land being used now by the town in any sort of, which way?
Bang Street is currently being used as storage, storage for records and stuff. And my, my thought would be, we will remove the stuff up there that just needs to be disposed of and shredded. And then, the records that we do want to keep, and some of them are historic documents, we're going to move to Town Hall.
Okay.
So, I think what we'll do is, we'll create a space over in our office and the Selectment Office, probably over in my office, where we can put in conditioned storage. We'll, we'll put up some shelving, put them over there, and create another office space, just putting up a petition wall. The, there is no other room here at Town Hall currently, unless we were to take away one of our meeting rooms. But there is a good amount of storage there, or a good amount of documents there that we do want to preserve and protect. They're not in the best condition over there. That building is, you know, not condition-controlled, climate-controlled. So, it is important to get them over here, and then we'll, we'll start looking towards the future on what we have to do if the, you know, the project, the fire station project, if that goes forward, if it's here in Glenowits, hopefully, we can do something as part of that project or a future project.
And they're all free and clear to sell. There's nothing holding them back. There's no issues with any land, no.
No. These are all, these are all good to go.
Can I ask a quick question? The Baywood Summer Street, just really quickly, do you have to go through a big process of that? Like, the Chestnut Street is near Woodsdale School. So, does it go through a big permits and everything? Of what?
We're just selling land.
But, but I mean, who's there?
Whoever buys it, they'll be subject to.
Whatever they want? Because.
They'll be subject to permitting like anybody else would be. Yeah, the zoning doesn't, they don't get a free ride on anything. It's buyer beware, really.
Okay.
But if, yeah, whatever they wanted to do on it, they, they would have to go through soup to not zoning.
Okay. I just hear a lot of arguing about building in Summer Street, and it's, you own his land. They can build, so I just want to make sure nothing gets put near the school too close, you know?
I'm not saying that they won't be able to build on it. I'm just saying that they'll have to go through permitting for it.
Well, right, but nothing's scary.
If it's a buildable lot, yeah.
Thing for the school and the kids. Thing for the school and the kids.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So there's those four parcels of land, like you said, they're all free and clear. This would be a move it forward?
Yeah. And the only reason this one had to be done separately, the other ones that are already approved, is because this, this is town-owned land directly. The other properties were all just foreclosures that we, we ended up with.
Yep. Right up.
Roberta Delaney, 96 Jennings Drive. I was just asking, is this going to be like a private auction like you did before?
Nope. This is going to be very public. And so the next step of this, at our next meeting, the auctioneers will be here and they're going to go over the process. But this will be, it'll be posted on our website. We're actually going to do as much advertisement as we can because obviously that'll get us the highest price.
Sure the neighbors would like to know.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're gonna, in, in some cases, depending on the parcel, some parcels are probably less likely to be of value to anybody other than the director butters. So we'll reach out to them. The, for instance, the Bang Street parcel would be of interest to a lot of different people. So we'll do a lot more advertising on that particular one. But the whole process will be public. It'll be on our website. It'll be throughout all of our social media. I don't know if TikTok will be ready by then.
I'm sure I could figure out something, Scott. Come on.
Special outfits for the selectmen to wear when they're on TikTok for that. We're looking forward to that.
Yeah. I think I got enough outfits. Don't worry.
Yes, you do.
Anyways. All right. So we would need a.
Just a motion to endorse it, I guess. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve auction of surplus land parcels as approved by town meeting vote of Article 10 of May 2018 annual town meeting.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Next up is vote to approve commercial garage license renewals.
Typically, Mr. Jim, we do these by page. And if anyone has any reason to abstain, we'll accept one. So on the first page, if we could do everything except LA Autobody, I would make a motion to approve everything on page one except LA Autobody.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Can we just make sure these motions are contingent on paid taxes?
That's already been, I believe Nancy makes sure the tax.
She did put a note on it. So vote to approve the attached list of commercial garage license renewals pending receipt of all paperwork satisfactory inspections and up-to-date taxes. So that would be Alex's motion.
That's it.
With the exception of LA Autobody and Repair.
With the exception.
All right. So we have a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So.
I'll make a motion to approve LA Autobody and Repair, contingent on all approved paperwork and paid taxes.
All right. Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm staying.
All right. We'll go to the second page. Be looking for a motion for social cycle parts through Whitman Body Works, Inc.
Make a motion. We approve those licenses based on, contingent on paperwork and paid up taxes.
And inspections.
And inspections. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Next up is the purchase and sales for Glenowits Way.
So this is the property that was approved at town meeting. We approved to buy it, hopefully for the, for the new fire station project. However, it's a great piece of property. It's on our campus. It's really useful to no one but us. But we'd like to make sure that we, when we wrap it up, it, it is a, it is a dry piece of property. It's 6.6 acres. And really, I just need you guys to vote to endorse the purchase and sale agreement. We won't be purchasing it right away. This gives us the opportunity to get up there, do the explorations we need to make sure that, you know, soil samples, that we can get the, you know, if we need alternative access, that we, you know, that we can check the topography and make sure that that'll work. There are contingencies in this and the, the closing's not actually probably till 2023, 2024. But this is just the purchase and sale so we can start the process.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
No. Make a motion that we approve the purchase and sale for Glenowits Way property.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Next is town manager requests for buyback of one week vacation time.
Yeah. So I have.
I just want to make sure that, should we be doing this in executive session?
The purchase and sale?
No. The, talking about an employee's contract or negotiations.
No. I mean, you know, if you guys want to say no, you can say no. By contracts, public document, it's out there. So it's not really a negotiation. It's, I, I have no, no desire to do it in executive session. So it's just, it's quite simple. I know that, you know, the, the contract, my contract allows me to carry over two weeks. I don't wish to carry over two weeks. It was, it very difficult. If I do carry it over, to use up the time that I do have, plus I'd like to carry over one week. It's going to be impossible for me to use the time this year in, you know, between what we're trying to form the inspectional services department, obviously what's happened over the past year, and the fact that my administrative assistant, your administrative assistant is going to be out of the office for the remainder of the year. So it's not something that I would normally do. I do like to use my time if I can, but carrying over two weeks is just exasperates the issue next year. So again, like I said, it's something that I normally wouldn't be looking to do. But in this particular case, I still have one week that I will carry over. And I do have seven, seven hours or a day of personal time that I will use between now and the end of the year.
Okay. Between COVID and everything else going on in town, I mean, I'd be in favor of this.
Yeah, I have no problem this year because of the situation, but it's not something that we would want to see every year.
No, I prefer to use my time too.
We'd like to use your time.
I, I. You called me anyways.
Yes. But if you're not in the office, you know.
I do have concerns about the precedent it'll set. Not, not so much for you for next year, but for people coming to your office and saying, wait a minute, I.
Well, most of the contractual obligations that we have with the unions allow for this.
Right. But yours doesn't.
Allows to.
Which was negotiated.
Right. Correct.
In good faith. So.
Okay. So entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll approve, I'll, I'll make a motion, town manager requests for buyback of one week vacation time.
Second.
This is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So it said, three, two, motion passes. Okay. So next up will be the town manager report.
All right. Well, there isn't much left to talk about, but let's see if I can find it. All right. So we initiated the bargaining process with the clerical unit at this time. After that, we still have DPW managers' unit remaining. Then we have to get back on with, to finish up the fire and police. Because as you know, we only did a one-year MOU on those. The police chief search committee will be having their third meeting this week. It's moving along well. Superintendent Shafer and chief, not all will be meeting with the committee to discuss what they think is important and what sort of things we should be looking for in our new chief. We received 29 applications. So that was very good. We got a very good response. We have security cameras are up and running at Island Grove now. They proved to be quite effective. The first night that they were up and running, apparently there was some kids out there having a party and a bonfire. So they are monitored over at the police station now. It is supposed to be closed from dusk till dawn. So, you know, we're, we're watching now. Again, I'm working with Sonia on the auctions. You'll meet with Paul Zikos from Zikos Auctioneers next week, or excuse me, in two weeks. And we'll review that process. Working on, with Marty on putting together the inspectional services department. On July 7th, Judy Barrett of Barrett Planning Group will be meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust. They're going to meet, it's going to be a Zoom meeting, mostly for the ease of getting everybody together for that meeting. But it'll also be out there that anybody who wants to watch will be able to watch. I, I would recommend if anybody who's interested in affordable housing and the creation of, and as, you know, some other topical issues that they'll discuss, you know, to a point with 40B and stuff like that, Judy is very knowledgeable and very helpful. And hopefully she'll end up, you know, as a consultant for the Affordable Housing Trust. So that, that will get posted and we'll get it out there on the website and get that link out for anybody who's interested. Again, like I said, we're, we're getting back to work on the online permitting. It's important to me to see that that's up and running. I kind of, you know, I, I like the idea that people have the access to, whether it's filing for a permit, filing a complaint. I'd like to get licenses on there and some other things that people can do at their convenience from home. I have some meetings with the solar company next week that they're looking for some options around town. I know that there was some talk prior to me getting here on some different spots that they were interested in. So we'll see what they have to offer and what they're looking at. And I had discussions today with a company that's looking to help us out with our landfill and capping the landfill. So we're going to have some future discussions on that and see where that goes. And the only other thing, and Sue can maybe help us or give us a quick update on where we are with the American Recovery Plan Act.
So I had a meeting on Thursday. They paid, basically telling us what we can spend it on, but not really telling us when we're getting it and what the parameters are on how we can use that money, whether it's right away or you have to get it approved. We did have to apply for it, which we did not know. We just found that out on Thursday. So we applied for the money. And while talking about that, we're, we just got our fifth reimbursement approval from the Plymouth County Cares. So we have two checks that we're waiting on. We'll, she'll give us $1.8 million back in reimbursements on what we've spent so far for COVID-related expenses. And with his talk on the inspectional services permitting thing, we're also getting iPads for, which just came up today. I approve, sorry, for the, the inspectors to have. So it's like real time on the scene. You're, you're approved and a vendor, a customer can go on and say, oh, he approved me right on the scene, you know? So they'll know where they stand with their e-permitting.
Okay.
That's it.
Anything from the board?
I'd just like to remind everyone that at our next meeting, we will be doing the annual appointments. And if you're interested in applying for one of the positions, it's on the front page of the website, I believe. And the application is there. You can fill it out online and send it into the town manager's office. And I encourage people, especially a lot of people that have a lot of things to say on Facebook, get involved if you want. There's a lot of positions that will be up for reappointment. This is the annual reappointment or appointment of all the boards and committees. So I urge everyone to look at it and pick a position.
Any further? Entertaining a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Motion is adjourned.